Select Board Needs The Vote Required For The Town Clerk To Send The Ballots To Every Single Registered Voter. Approve Ballot Article For, oh my God, I got a half a glass, I'm sorry. Exemption Status For Fire And Rescue. Approve To Approve General Road Fund Budget As Presented. Approve FY 22 Town Warning By Public Comment. Executive Session For Personnel. Do I have a motion to approve?
Do we need to add, um, I know, um, the constable, whether or not we're gonna put that as an appointment or elected position?
Okay, we can do that as a G under approved town warning, or do you want to do it before that? Before that, we'll make.
Well, it could be, it could be at the end of that, that's fine.
Okay. Alright. Alright, would that change? Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion, we accept the agenda as amended.
Do I have a second? Bob?
Uh, actually, uh, any discussion?
Oh, sorry, any discussion?
I, I just, uh, did we need to add the town hall? At least to open that discussion? Let's, uh, I, I think it'd be a very brief discussion.
Do you want to do it?
Because we don't have the numbers, but we need to. Uh, sure, uh, that's fine with me.
Alright, town hall. Alright, anything else?
Where did we, where did we add the town hall, Angie?
After the town warning, so it'll be.
The last item.
It'll be a G.
Not to be technical, but shouldn't that go under old business?
Yeah, it's all part of a warning.
Okay, uh, that, you sold me, that's fine.
So, does your motion still carry with the?
Yep, yep, no, it's fine.
So, Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie? Ronnie? Angie, aye. Okay, warrants. Payroll. Oh my God, I did that. Jeez, I'm so sorry. Approval Of Minutes. One eleven.
Make a motion, we approve one eleven minutes.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie? Ronnie? Angie, aye. A motion to approve minutes of one twelve.
Make a motion, we approve one twelve.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie? Ronnie? Angie, aye. Okay, number three, warrant. Payroll Ending One twenty-two, twenty-one For Eleven Thousand Two Hundred and Nineteen Dollars And Eighty-Nine Cent. Payroll Ending One twenty-nine, twenty-one For Eleven Thousand One Hundred Dollars And Eight Cent. Accounts Payable Ending One twenty-two, twenty-one For Thirty-five Thousand One Hundred And Fifty-two Dollars And Fourteen Cent. Fourteen Thousand Five Hundred Ninety-One Dollars And Thirty-Six Cent For Appalachia Salt. Massala Waste Management Three Thousand Four Twenty-Six Thirty-Two. Pusick Water Quality District For Eighteen Hundred. Don Ray Sun For Eighteen O Two Seventy-Five. Um, IRS For Four Thousand Ninety-Three Dollars And Seven Cent. Accounts Payable Ending One Twenty-nine, twenty-one In The Amount Of Twenty-four Thousand Four Hundred And Ninety-seven Dollars And Twenty-six Cent. Um, CAT TV For One Thousand Five Thirty-seven Fifty. Green Mountain Power For Two Thousand Five Hundred And Thirteen Dollars And Sixty-seven Cent. Um, MVP Healthcare For Six Thousand Eight Hundred And Seventeen Dollars And Twelve Cent. Eimer For Four Thousand Eighty-two Seventy-eight. IRS For Three Thousand Eight Twenty-eight Thirty-one. Can I entertain a motion to accept the warrants, please? I'm sorry? Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie? Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Alright, new business.
Angie, I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing Jamie, so he's either gotta speak up or something.
Jamie, when you talk, you can take your mask down.
Or speak up.
One or the other. Yep. Okay. New business. Approve Nemrick Assessing Contract. Assessing Contract. Does everybody have it? I had it, I lost it.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Four. They dropped me and pushed us down. Yeah, well, I probably don't read about this much, but. Alright. If anyone has a copy of it, I'll read it out loud.
Um, I didn't see it in my.
There, this one? Oh, thank you, okay. There's that. Yep, so, um. So, the fol- the, the following proposal is from Nemrick. Um, it's purchase of the Nemrick Miscellaneous Cash Receipts Module For Seven.
That's the next one, this is, it should be the assessing.
Here you go. Oh, assessing, sorry, okay, I was hitting the wrong one, okay?
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, no, it's okay, um. That is a lot. Okay, I will, I will skim it and synopsize it. So, this agreement's made between the Town of Pownall And Nemrick. The scope of the work, Nemrick Will Assist The Pownall Listers With The Appraisal Assessment Of Real Property And Pownall. And The Scope Of The Assessment Services Includes Inspecting And Assessing New Residential And Commercial Properties. Inspect And Assess Parcels With Permits For Additions And Changes. Supervise In-House Computer System Valuation. Review Real Estate Data And General Information Of Trends In Real Estate. Hear And Assist Listers With Annual Grievances Dependent Of Nemrick Availability. Assist Listers With Preparation For BCA Hearings As Available. And Provide Basic Support On The Kama System. Um, the office, the Town Of Pownall Is Required To Provide Office Fa- uh, Space. See Timeline, This Agreement Will Be For Twelve Months Starting July Twenty-Twenty And May Be Extended Each Subsequent Year As Agreed By Both Parties. The Cost Of Assessment Services. Um, uh, completed by Nemrick, Appraisal Staff Will Be Ninety-five Dollars Per Hour Plus Forty-seven Fifty Per Hour Of Travel. Hearings Beyond BCA Will Be billed At Ninety-five Per Hour For Appraiser Level Services And A Hundred And Forty-five Per Hour For Senior Appraiser Services. Payment Will Be billed Monthly. And the rest of it talks about how expenses allocated to the Town Of Pownall That You Are Responsible For Things Such As Paper Postcards, Et Cetera, Et Cetera. Okay? There you go.
Mike's motion. Mike, is your motion still there?
Yep.
I made a motion, a second? Any discussion?
Rebecca, is, or Angie, is this, what is this, um, discussion, is, what, what is, this is what we're paying now already anyway, right, with the, when John comes down, correct? That's what I thought. I just wanted to, I, I wanna get on the right, the right track where we make a motion and then we discuss things like, like we talked about.
Okay. Any further discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie? Ronnie? Angie, aye. Okay, approve Nemrick Cash Register Modular And Training.
It's Cash Receipt Module, Angie.
I'll read that one.
Yeah.
So, um, uh, this is for the purchase of the Nemrick Miscellaneous Cash Receipts Module Which Cynthia Presented On At That Meeting, yep?
Yes.
A one-time purchase Of Seventeen Hundred Dollars, Seventeen Hundred Ninety-five Dollars. Um, training and consulting, The Estimate Is Ten To Fifteen Hours At A Hundred And Forty-five An Hour, So That Es- That Adds Up To Be Two Thousand One Hundred And Seventy-five Dollars. And Then Travel, Which Is An Estimated Two Trips At Seventy-two Fifty An Hour, Four Hundred And Thirty-five Dollars. She Did Make Mention, However, In Her Presentation That She Thought Perhaps Travel Would Be Unnecessary, So That's, But That's There, Four Hundred Thirty-five Dollars. The Town Of Pownall Is Already Covered By Our Annual Support Agreement And Disaster Recovery Management. There Will Not Be An Increase In Those Agreements By Adding This Module.
So, this is gonna help considerably With Everything Going Through The Cash Receipt Module As We Discussed In Our Meeting. So, everybody understands This Is Gonna Be A Huge Improvement.
This is one of the things the auditor spoke about.
Yes.
As far as, um, one of our checks and balances, our weaknesses.
Right.
Um, so that's, I think, where, uh, I feel strongly About Supporting It.
Correct.
That's excellent point, um, we, we, we're directly, uh, we're directly addressing the, uh, the, the audit defense.
Right.
And again, can't stress that enough, one-time charge, uh, it's already covered on the main.
Right.
And I'll make a motion, we approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Is it, I, I have one, I want one clarification. On The Hourly Rate, um, The Twenty-one Ninety-five Or Whatever It Was, Two Thousand One Hundred Ninety-five, That Was The Maximum That Cynthia Felt Would Be Extended, correct?
Correct.
No, that's. Uh, it could be as low As Ten Times, uh, One Thirty-five, It Could Be Fifty. A- And We Believe That The Travel Is Not Gonna Be There Either. Even Though It's Estimated At Forty-four Oh Five, The End Is Gonna Be Less Than, Uh, Less Than Four Thousand Probably About Thirty-Eight.
Right.
Right, I just wanted to make sure That That Was Clear, That, That The Training, The Extender For The Training Per Hour, That The Two Thousand Dollar Figure Was What She Felt Would Be The Maximum.
Yep. Any other further discussion?
Just wanted to clear For Everybody Who's Listening.
Okay. Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie? Angie, aye. Alright, C. Select Board Vote Required For Town Clerk To Send Ballots To Every Registered Voter. Do I Need A Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, discussion, This Is For Julie. Send Every Required Voter The Ballot. Registered Voter The Ballot. Okay, any other discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Can you hear me, Mike?
Aye.
Jamie? Ronnie? Angie, aye. Alright, We Need To Approve Ballot Articles For Exemption Status For Fire And Rescue. And The Ballot For The Constable, If We Want To Add That.
So, the exemption was the, uh, exempt from, From Property Tax, tax, correct?
Article Thirty-eight?
Can you read it?
Yes, please.
Shall The Town Of Pownall Vote To Continue To Exempt The Pownall Volunteer Rescue Squad And The Pownall Volunteer Fire Department's Property Taxes On The Following Parcels For A Period Of No More Than Five Years Commencing With The Grand List Year Starting April One, Twenty-Twenty-One Ending March Thirty-one, Twenty-Twenty-Six. Pownall Rescue Squad Building And Land At Twenty-two Lad And Fire Houses And Land Located At Two Fifty-three Route Three Forty-six, Thirty-one Thirty-seven Route Three Forty-six, Twenty-eight Fifty-four South Stream Road And Twenty-eight Seventy-two North Pownall Road. And That's A Required Ballot Article For Re-upping Their Exemption, Otherwise They End Up Paying The Taxes.
Don't move. I'll second.
Second.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, So Now The Ballot For The Constable. Can You Hear Me, Mike? You Sound Like Your Water Is running.
Not me, I, my, My Internet Is In And Out Tonight, That's For Sure.
Okay. So, Shall The Voters Authorize The Select Board To Appoint A Town Constable As Provided In Seventeen VSA Two-Six-Five-One-A? This Is True, But We, This Is On The State. That Has Not Been Taken Off, So It.
It's Still Required By State Statute.
By State Statute, yeah.
To Exist, The Position Is Still Required By Statute To Exist. This Is Asking To Put The Ballot Article To Make It Appointed, As Opposed To Elected.
Oh.
I'll make a motion To Make It Appointed, Uh, Um, As The Ballot Article States.
Alright, do I have a second? Jamie? Any Further Discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Ronnie? Angie, aye. Well, Linda, Could You Please Add That To The? Thank you. Alright. C. Approve The General And Road Fund Budget As Presented.
I'll make a motion, We Approve The General Budget.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie? Ronnie?
Aye.
Approve The FY Twenty-two Town Warning. Rebecca?
Well, let's, let, I did, I only did The General, Angie, I wanted To Do Them Separate.
Sorry.
But That's Okay. Make a motion, We Approve The Road Budget.
Okay.
Bob, seconded. Any Discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie? Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, Moving On To F. Approve The FY Twenty-two Town Warning. Rebecca, Will You Please Read Since Everybody Can Hear You Some Better?
No. Okay. Um. It says Twenty-Twenty-One On Mine, By The Way. Is It Twenty-Twenty-two Or Twenty-Twenty-One?
It's Twenty-Twenty-One, Right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
This One Is Wrong Over Here Then.
Okay.
Sorry.
The Inhabitants Of The Town Of Pownall Qualified To Vote In The Town Meeting Are Hereby Notified And Warned To Meet By A Zoom In Said Town On Sunday, February Twenty-eighth, Twenty-Twenty-One At Seven PM O'Clock In The Evening And On Tuesday, March Second, Twenty-Twenty-One For Australian Ballot Voting At The Pownall Center Firehouse To Vote For The Following Issues And Candidates. Moderator For One Year, Selectman For Three Years. Selectman For One Year, Selectman For One Year, Lister For Two Years, Lister For One Year, Constable For Two Years, Town Clerk For Three Years, Treasurer For Three Years, Trustee Of Public Monies For Two Years And Trustee Of Public Monies For Two Years. The Informational Meetings Will Be On The Following Dates. February Third, Twenty-Twenty-One And February Twenty-fourth, Twenty-Twenty-One To Meet By A Zoom At Seven PM And Then Stand Adjourned Until Ten AM At The Pownall Center Firehouse For Australian Ballot Voting On Articles Four Through Thirty-eight. Polls Will Be Open From Ten AM To Seven PM. I Feel Like There's Something Missing There.
There's Going To Be Now Through Thirty-nine.
Yep, So This Will Be Through Thirty-nine, But Also. Okay, And Those Informational Hearings Are In Regards To The Town Hall Bond Vote Only, Correct?
Yeah, Correct.
Okay. Ballots Will Be Mailed To All Active Registered Voters. You Will Have The Option To Vote In Person, Mail Your Ballot Back Or Drop Off At The Town Office. Following Are The Articles To Be Voted, March Second, Twenty-Twenty-One. Article, Do We Have One, Two, One, Two And Three?
Actually, We'll Go Back There.
We Need To Insert.
February Twenty.
Yes, That's The Thing, We're Missing The February Twenty-eighth, So. So, Insert February Twenty-eighth, Which Is The General Town Meeting. Okay. Well, It Says It Above, But Alright, We Will Clean Up That Language, I Believe. So, Ballots Will Be Mailed, I Already Read That, Okay, So Do We Have One, Two And Three Turn Down? Or We Read Those Last Week, So We're Good?
We Read Those Last Week, They're Part Of The Discussion.
Okay, Article Four. The Election Of All Officers Required By Law. Article Five. Shall The Voters Authorize The Select Board To Appoint A Town Clerk As Provided In Seventeen VSA Two-Six-Five-One-E? Article Six. Shall The Town Compensate The Town Clerk With A Salary Instead Of Any Statutory Fees Allowed Under Thirty-two VSA Fourteen-O-One? Article Seven. Shall The Voters Authorize The Select Board To Appoint A Town Treasurer As Provided In Seventeen VSA Two-Six-Five-One-F? Article Eight. Shall The Voters Authorize The Select Board To Appoint A Collector Of Delinquent Taxes Pursuant To Seventeen VSA Two-Six-Five-One-D-A? Article Nine. Shall The Town Compensate The Delinquent Tax Collector With A Salary Instead Of Any Statutory Fees Allowed Under Thirty-two VSA Sixteen Seventy-four? Article Ten. Shall The Voters Authorize The Elimination Of The Office Of Town Lister In accordance With Seventeen VSA Two-Six-Five-One-C-B-One And Replace It With A Professionally Qualified Assessor Who Shall Have The Same Powers, Discharge The Same Duties, Proceed In The Discharge thereof In The Same Manner And Be Subject To The Same Liabilities As Are Prescribed. Or That's The Word? Hold On, I Gotta Make A Note, That Feels Like A Wrong Word To Me. For Listers Or The Board Of Listers Under The Provisions Of Title Thirty-two. Article Eleven. Shall The Town Authorize Cannabis Retailers And Integrated Licensees Into The Town Pursuant To Seven VSA Eight-Sixty-three? Article Twelve. Shall The Town Of Pownall Reinstate The Positions Of Three Internal Auditors To Serve The Town With The Same Terms And In The Same Capacity As In The Past Including But Not Limited To Regularly Auditing The Books And Preparing The End-of-Year Town Report? Article Thirteen. Shall The Voters Appropriate One Million One Hundred And Twenty-eight Thousand Five Hundred And Forty-five Dollars For The General Expenses Of The Town Of Which Seven Hundred And Thirty-seven, Six Hundred And Fifty-one Dollars And Thirty-two Cent Is To Be Raised By Taxes And Seventy-six Thousand Three Hundred And Forty-three Dollars And Sixty-eight Cent From Prior Year Undesignated Surplus Funds? Article Fourteen. Shall The Voters Appropriate One Million One Hundred And Thirty-eight Thousand Ten Dollars For The Maintenance And Construction Of Highways Of The Town Of Which Eight Hundred And Thirty-six Thousand Four Hundred And Ninety-seven Dollars And Seventy-six Cent Is To Be Raised By Taxes And One Hundred And Sixty-five Thousand Five Hundred And Twelve Dollars And Twenty-four Cent From Prior Year Undes- Undesignated Surplus Funds? Article Fifteen. Shall The Voters Appropriate Eleven Thousand Dollars Towards The Support Of The Bennington Area Visiting Nurse Association And Hospice? Article Sixteen. Shall The Voters Appropriate Five Hundred Dollars For The Support Of The Bennington County Conservation District? Article Seventeen. Shall The Voters Appropriate Five Hundred Dollars Towards The Support Of Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse, A Not-for-Profit Agency? Article Eighteen. Shall The Town Of Pownall Vote To Raise, Appropriate And Expend The Sum Of Two Thousand Dollars For The Support Of The Bennington Free Clinic? Article Nineteen. Shall The Voters Appropriate Two Thousand Dollars Towards The Support Of Bennington Project Independence? Article Thirty. Shall The Town Of.
Twenty.
Twenty, ooh, Sorry. Shall The Town Of Pownall Vote To Appropriate The Sum Of One Thousand Eight Hundred Dollars To Support The Programs And Services Of Brock Community Action In Southwest Vermont For Low-Income Persons? Article Twenty-one. Shall The Voters Appropriate Six Hundred Dollars For The Support Of Services Rendered To The Town By The Green Mountain Retired Senior Volunteer Program And Volunteer Center? Article Twenty-two. Shall The Voters Appropriate Two Hundred Dollars For The Support Of Vermont Green Up? Article Twenty-three. Shall The Voters Appropriate Five Thousand Dollars Towards The Support Of The Oak Hill Children's Center? Article Twenty-four. Shall The Voters Appropriate Sixty Thousand Dollars Towards The Operation And Maintenance Of The Pownall Fire Protective Association, Inc.? Article Twenty-five. Shall The Voters Appropriate Fifty Thousand Dollars For The Pownall Rescue Squad Towards Ambulance Replacement, Insurance, Operation And Maintenance? Article Twenty-six. Shall The Voters Appropriate For The Operation And Maintenance Of The Pownall Valley Fire Department Consisting Of The East Pownall Fire Company, Pownall Center Fire, Uh, Center Company And The North Pownall Fire Company The Sum Of Fifty-two Thousand Dollars? Article Twenty-seven. Shall The Voters Appropriate Nineteen Thousand Five Hundred Dollars Towards The Pownall Va- Valley Fire Department Fire Truck And Equipment Fund? Article Twenty-eight. Shall The Town Of Pownall Vote To Raise, Appropriate And Expend The Sum Of Two Thousand Dollars For The Support Of Pownall Youth Baseball? Article Twenty-nine. Shall The Voters Appropriate Five Hundred Dollars For The Support Of Services Rendered To The Town By The Project Against Violent Encounters? Article Thirty. Shall The Voters Appropriate Fifteen Thousand Dollars For The Operation And Maintenance Of The Solomon Wright Library? Article Thirty-one. Shall The Voters Of Pownall Appropriate Fifteen Thousand Dollars Towards The Support Of A Director For The Solomon Wright Public Library? Article Thirty-two. Shall The Voters Appropriate One Thousand Two Hundred Dollars For The Support Of Services Rendered The Town By The Southwest Vermont Area Council On Aging? Article Thirty-three. Shall The Voters Appropriate Five Thousand Dollars Towards The Support Of Sunrise Family Resource Center, A Not-for-Profit Agency? Article Thirty-four. Shall The Voters Appropriate Two Thousand Five Hundred Dollars Towards The Support Of The Program And Service Provided To The Town By The Tutorial Center? Article Thirty-five. Shall The Voters Appropriate Four Hundred And Forty Dollars For The Support Of Disabled Vermonters By The Vermont Center Of Independent Living? Article Thirty-six. Shall The Voters Of Pownall Vote To Raise, Appropriate And Expend The Sum Of Two Thousand Dollars For The Support Of The Pownall Valley Swinging Seniors To Provide Services To Residents Of The Town? Article Thirty-seven. Shall The Voters Appropriate Twenty Thousand Dollars Towards The Pownall Va- Valley Fire Department Fire Station Building Fund? Article Thirty-eight. Shall The Town Of Pownall Vote To Continue To Exempt The Pownall Volunteer Rescue Squad And The Pownall Volunteer Fire Department's Property Taxes On The Following Parcels For A Period Of No More Than Five Years Commencing With Grand List Year Starting April One, Twenty-Twenty-One Ending March Thirty-one, Twenty-Twenty-Six. Pownall Rescue Squad Building And Land At Twenty-two Lad Road And Fire Houses And Land Located At Two Fifty-three Route Three Forty-six, Thirty-one Thirty-seven Route Three Forty-six, Twenty-eight Fifty-four South Stream Road And Twenty-eight Seventy-two North Pownall Road And Now You've Added Article Thirty-nine. Shall The Voters Authorize The Select Board To Appoint A Town Constable As Provided In Seventeen VSA Twenty-Six-Fifty-One-A? Dated At Pownall, Vermont On This Twenty-eighth Day Of January, Twenty-Twenty-One, Pownall Select Board.
Thank You, Rebecca.
Yep.
May I Just Add Another Sentence?
Oh, did, yeah. There's Some Language That Needs To Be Cleaned Up In That First.
Do You Want To Keep That?
Yeah, Let Me, I Did Wrote Notes On It, I Write Notes On It.
I Have One, Thank You.
I'd Actually Like To Correct This Language Now Before We Walk Out From Being In The Same Room Together, If That's Possible.
Sure.
So, The Informational Me- In This Second, Uh, Paragraph Here, The Informational Meetings Will Be On The Following Dates. Do We Need To Say The Town Hall Bond Vote Informational Meetings?
We Also Have Two Other Articles. Right, It Has Articles One, Two And Three.
Uh. Okay. Special Informational Meetings?
Wait, How Long Is It?
What The Hell Was That Team Saying?
Julie.
I'm Trying To Talk To You For A Second, But I'm Not For Sure If I Got Ya.
There You Are, Yes, Nice Music.
Okay, Mike, Before You Put The Special Warning On That One, Remember, We Already Have A Special Warning With The Other Ballot Article, That's The One, Two, Three One That We Have To Do. So, I'm Not For Sure If We Have To Put That On This One, Because We Already Have A Warning For The Special One That You Guys Already Previously Approved. So, I Was Just, So I Don't Know If You Have To Put It On This One Because Of The Other One. But You Can Just Double Check If You Want.
Okay. Okay, I Just Didn't, I Didn't, It Wasn't Clear What Those Informational Meetings Were And They Seem To Be. So, I Think That's Great If We Can Take It Out.
Okay.
Alright, So I'm Gonna Unmute Myself.
Really, Okay. Okay.
What Are Those Dates? What Are The Informational Dates Again, Rebecca?
Three-Hour, February Third, Twenty-Twenty-One And February Twenty-fourth, Both Of Them At Seven PM? And, Yeah, We Have A Warning Out For That, I Also Put It, Um, Put It In The Newsletter I Just Sent Out, Actually.
Yes, You Did, Yep. Yes, You Did. Yep. The Town Meeting Date Again, Sunday, February Twenty-eighth.
Sunday.
At Seven PM, Seven PM, Yes. Okay, Are We Off Here?
Mm-hmm.
Don't Move.
Do I Have A Second?
Second.
Okay, Bob?
No.
Discussion.
So, You Have A Citizen Who Would Like To Make A Comment? Can I Put Him On?
Yes, Please.
Okay. Jim? So I Had Jim Kosis, I Assume?
Hi, How Are You? Hey, I, I, I Guess I Was Just.
I guess I was just confused, and I think Julie kinda touched base on it, because I did see the other warning that was on the website. It seems to have been... It seems to have been taken off, so, um, I guess I was just confused on what that warning was versus the warning that you're doing tonight. Um, but just for clarification of, um, if Rebecca could just double-check to make sure the warning that was signed on, I think, January fourteenth. My understanding is warrants need to be, um, approved or whatever, within thirty days of the election, but not more than forty, and I think that one extends past the forty days, so I'll leave it to you guys. I just don't want anything to come up, um, with the bond on the, um, town hall to find out that that is, was, um, worn too early. Thank you very much.
Awesome, Jim, thank you for your... So that was put to... Yeah, that warning was put together by our bond council. Um, but I will, just because you said it, and now it's a question in my mind, I will double-check the timing of that. I'll send an email to our bond council tomorrow to ensure that we've not, because of the forty-five-day warning, but that was all done based on his, um... And just to, so to explain to everyone what that other warning is, is that those are the two that are votes that are normally a floor vote that we can no longer do.
Right.
And then it's the town hall bond, um, vote, and so those hearings, those informational hearings will be primarily about that town hall bond.
Correct.
Okay, and, um, you chose the base, but we chose them based on the input we got from the bond council.
That's correct.
So to Jim's point, I think, is really, we need to check it, double-check and make sure that we're within.
Right, because if we issued the warning to... I understand what he's saying, like, yes, we picked those dates based on what the bond council told us to do, but...
Maybe you guys could just approve it tonight, and then that would take care of the whole thing and cover everyone's butt.
Right, exactly.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Okay. So...
Well, let's do the second.
Let's do the second. Alright, so... You need an approval to approve, a motion to approve this?
Yep, we got that on the table.
Number thirty-nine.
Thirty-eight, or thirty-nine, excuse me. Yeah, with the inclusion of Article thirty-nine for the constable. Right.
We've got the motion in a second, we're...
Okay. Any more discussion?
I have one, I have one question. Um, the town hall bond vote is going to be on its own separate ballot, not the same ballot that we're putting all these other articles on, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I thought, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, got water running again.
No, I don't.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie? Angie, aye. Okay. Do I have that motion, both that we can... The other article?
You could, you could, you could make... I'm thinking you could probably make a motion to approve Articles one, two, and three.
I thought I had it.
Maybe they could make that motion for us.
Alright, so can I have a motion for that, please, for Articles one, two, and three?
Um, I'm not sure what the motion is. Is it to reaffirm the, uh, articles? I'll make a motion that we reaffirm the valid Articles one, two, and three.
Second that.
Alright, any discussion? Mike, do you have anything?
Nope.
Nope. Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Ronnie, uh, Amy? Ronnie? Angie, aye. Okay. So now, we're gonna discuss the town hall. We wanted to...
Oh, I think, yeah, that's the, uh, I just wanted to open up that as a discussion, but I don't think we have the numbers yet, so we need to get those numbers. So, um, uh, last time we did this, we did it by parcel, and I just wanna make sure that that's, that we do it, uh, that we choose the way that we do it going forward for, uh, because we have another opportunity now that, now that, now that this is going out for a vote again, we have an opportunity to change it, and I don't think it was quite fair the way we did it before. Somebody owned ten parcels in town, they would be, they would have been paying two hundred and fifty dollars, even if those ten parcels added up to, you know, a hundred thousand dollars worth of value. Um, so I just wanna make sure, the reason I wanted to bring it up is because I think we ought to discuss it, we ought to decide as a board, and we all have different opinions, but, but we need those numbers, uh, so that we can present them to, uh, to the town, and the town will know what, what the tax is gonna be. I mean, uh, and I wanna... I personally feel that, that it was a mistake to do it by parcel, um, but, uh, but we can, we can talk about that, and we can decide how to go forward.
Okay. And we sent out an email to Ellen, right?
Uh, yes, yes.
And she should be getting back to us? We should have all that information by our next week.
Hearing next week.
Hearing next week.
So without advocating for any method, you know, the methods that I can think of are by parcel, by developed parcel, by, by landowner grand list, um, or per hundred thousand dollars worth of value, um, any one of, uh, so, and, and there could be other methods I haven't thought of.
Right.
But those are the ones that I can think of off the top of my head, and just have a, an open discussion about it and, uh, arrive at a, arrive at a decision. Hear the pros and cons.
Right. Okay. Anything else? Mike, do you have anything on that?
Nope.
Okay, then, we can open up for public comment. Is there anybody out there for public comment? Please raise your hand.
Um, you can just hand up. Go ahead, Jim.
Jim?
Sorry about that. Yeah, sorry. Just one, uh, question, because, um, I guess I was very surprised to hear about the, um, Nemrick's and the appraisal listers helping out and stuff like that. I wasn't sure if it was discussed prior to tonight, but in any case, if that contract is signed tonight, and if by any chance the listers are, um, the ballot for them is to change it to appointment, um, right now, I know we do have an appraiser that does work out every single, uh, or has been doing it every single year, so what happens to the contract if that scenario, um, happens? Does Nemrick continue? Do they become the appraiser? Um, are they licensed as an appraiser in the state of Vermont? And, um, dot, dot, dot.
Dot, dot, dot what? Were you done, hon, or did something just happen?
Sorry, Jim, were you...
No, no, I, I'm just curious.
Oh, okay, kind of like, like ended or something.
That part, Jim, that part...
No, well, I'm sorry, I, I'm just curious if, if that contract will continue, if the listers are eliminated or, um, to the point of appointed, and then what happens to the appraiser that we have been hiring every year?
It would take him to, um, do an assessment, an assessment, right?
Yeah.
Um, instead, in lieu of listers, and therefore we wouldn't need the Nemrick's, I don't believe, either. We gotta do part of it, not, not the full contract.
The contract doesn't go in effect until July.
So, Nemrick would renegotiate the contract with the town?
Right.
And it would, they would provide, they do provide assessor services, that's who comes, that's what, who the contract is with currently, um, and what would happen is we would then enter into a sole contract with their assessor, if they were available and wanting the job, we could continue with the person who knows our town, knows our land records, um, that's up for you guys to decide, but Nemrick would be available for that. They do provide that service, um, singular from having listers.
Right.
If that makes sense, Jim?
Well, it makes sense, but, I mean, if this, if this whole thing doesn't start until July, is there a reason why we're doing it tonight and not until after we have the vote, and then go forward?
The town of Pownell has currently been under contract with Nemrick for assessing services since two thousand and eighteen.
So this is an extension? It just expired, and they were extending it for six months? Is that what we're doing? Yeah.
The, the way I understood this contract was the contract starts on July one, twenty-twenty. Correct?
Right, making sure that we're answering these questions. Um, if, uh, if, if we go to a point of vista, uh, I think that, I think the end of the con, the, the meaning of the contract, and correction if I'm wrong, and the way that could be, is that, uh, it is how much, it's how many hours of service is being used.
Right.
Right, so we could use more or, more or fewer hours, renegotiate the contract depending on what comes out of it.
Absolutely. Or use the, you know, for another assessor service.
Okay, and to Jim's specific question, which was, uh, we, what happens to the current, uh, to the current, uh, assessor? It is Nemrick. That's right. That's the, that's the twenty-eighteen contract.
They're providing assessing services.
Right, right, but that was his question. But there, there, what happens to the current, uh, you already contracted with someone. I don't think Jim was realizing that it was Nemrick.
Yes, we already have an assessor who is through Nemrick, he's been doing it for several years, and what you do after, if the listers become appointed, is, will be at the discretion of the board.
Okay.
Alright.
Jim, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess so, I mean, I just leave it out there for a question, and if you guys are all set with it, I'm fine.
Thank you. Mike, did you have something to say?
Oh, no, I just, that's, that was the question I asked when we voted on it. This was, this, the, the assessing contract is what we're already saying John from Nemrick to do now. It's just, it's just extending that contract that we already have with him or with Nemrick, um, to have him come down and do the assessing as he has been doing for a number of years.
Okay, any other public comment? Anybody else up there? Please raise your hand.
Um, I don't see anyone else. Jim pulls his hand, raises it to the question, if you wanna let him say something.
Oh, okay.
No, he put his hand down.
Oh, he put his hand down, okay, so like, oh, and he's unmuted, though.
Jim, do you have another question?
Oh, I'm all set, thank you.
Matt Dragon, really?